And also included a requirement that the petitioner to go out at school kick in a certain amount of money. Uh, because it's a state road, we need to abide by their standards and what's required. This was the total cost, working with the counselor from the ward, Council Viola. We identified a couple of other mitigation accounts from which to take some of the money to total uh this forty-five, seven, seventy-one, which is our share. I don't know if you want to add anything?
Yep, I will add that um this portion of it is actually double what it should have cost because Mass D O T decided that they didn't want solar powered pedestrian beacons there. They actually wanted the hardwired ones, so we were hoping that we'd get the solar powered ones, but Mass D O T approved the hardwired ones.
Council Viola, Mayor Conklin, do we know now, assuming this is getting approved, do we have a rough timeline as to when we would expect to see the uh construction or the, you know?
I think the turnaround time on these type of lights is not very long, so we ought to be able to procure them fairly quickly and try to get them in ASAP.
So I did speak with Superintendent Durand, he told me it would be in before, well before next school year, so. Council member.
Being that these things need to be hardwired, we don't need a drop or anything from Ever Source or anything. Does Ever Source have to get involved in this at all, or can we make the appropriate electrical connections?
As I sit here right now, I'm not certain.
All right, thank you, sir.
Councilor Merser.
I just wanted to commend you on a great job. This permit was a long process with a lot of detail. Um, and I was by it the other day. It looks amazing. I hope the neighbors are happy with the work that you did with this council. So nicely done.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Make a motion that the transfer set out ought to pass?
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Uh, fourth item on the agenda, order to authorize the mayor to enter into a lease for Cummings' properties for the premise of four F Henshaw Street for temporary relocation of Fire Station number four. Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. So this is uh, this is a request asking the council to let me enter into a lease for us to temporarily house Fire Station four, East Woburn, at the block uh on Henshaw Street that's owned by Cummings' property. There's a bay there. I mentioned this briefly before in another context. Uh, there was an ambulance company that worked out of that particular garage, that bay. Um, they left, it became available, Cummings approached the chief, the chief is here, I'm gonna ask him to step in in a minute, um, with an offer for us to house our engine and potentially, if we go this route, uh, a pilot program, third ambulance in that section of the city, house them in this location for what I would say is relatively uh short money. Uh, the idea would be that when we begin to tear down Station four to rebuild it, rather than having those crews and that apparatus work out of headquarters, which was the plan A originally and which could still work, um, we felt based on what uh Cummings is willing to do to modify the space to our needs, how much they're asking in terms of lease, uh fifty-nine hundred dollars a month for eighteen months, we felt it was a, it was a reasonable uh expense. It was something worth considering. I have copies of the lease too, if you want.
I think motion to accept that as part of the permit record.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Uh, so we, we thought it was, we thought it was a good idea. We thought that the, the relocation of the Station four groups and, and apparatus headquarters would serve the city's needs for the eighteen months. But there's no disputing the fact that keeping those crews and that apparatus within the neighborhood of East Woburn is even better. It's a better option. The crews, the water, the apparatus is all right there in the neighborhood. Similar response from Central Street. Uh, so because they came to us with what appears to be a pretty good deal, uh, we wanted to get it in front of the council, um, have you consider it. I wanted to give a brief summary, but I'd like to bring the chief up, because he's got answers to maybe some operational questions you might have. How well you think that this um serves our, our purposes. Again, I think you, you, you might best want to give the chief some of these answers.
Chief Powley. Hi. I'd be happy to answer any questions anybody has.
Councilor DeMurray. So operationally, chief, this would basically supplement or basically allow us to remain operationally sound on that side of town?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, so typically, if you're gonna take a station down or rehab, you need temporary quarters, and a lot of times there's room on the space. There isn't, it's for its type. So we had to find, we, we, so we, we did a study to see if the response times still work, and they do, but you're at the high end of response times. Um, then we're gonna move modest uh HQ because it's a new facility and it's got good living conditions, and we were gonna go with that with the possible, um, you know, um, a, a, a third ambulance in the, in the district to kinda stack the deck and outfit. This came out of the blue and fell in our lap, and as it moved up the chain with Cummings, we can, they're very motivated to help us. They're gonna absorb all the uh buildup costs, which are sixty-two thousand bucks. They're handling that all on their own, they're not looking for anything, and they dropped the monthly rent number significantly. The um, you know, the utility costs are a wash because Station four is gonna go down and it's really talking about the rent for, say, eighteen months, times six grand, you know, ninety thou.
Yeah.
Again, the utilities are a wash, but if we were to spend the same, it would be about eight hundred.
Right, so you weigh the ninety against a temporary sta- uh station, you're talking triple the cost for that. So it kinda falls in between and it's a much, it's the safest option. But we can still, as the mayor said, operate out of it.
All right, thank you.
Councilor member.
Chief, I think this is a great idea, just to let you know. Um, the response time is right there. I don't think you're gonna, it's gonna fluctuate by a little, maybe a few seconds, maybe a minute or so. Um, so I think keeping, keeping an ambulance and perhaps an engine in that, that section, um, I think that's great. My question is, where does the rent money come out of? Does that come out of your building costs for Station four, or is there another account at that?
I would suggest it comes out of the ambulance receipts, the ongoing ambulance receipts, where we have sufficient.
Okay, so, so basically this is gonna be taken care of pretty much.
Charlie was here, he would tell you.
Understand.
It's dual.
Okay. With no effects to our budgets or anything like that, or your budget?
No, and I just wanna point out, having a third ambulance, you have two EMTs there. No firefighting capacity, a little firefighting capacity, they have a two-and-a-half gallon water can. An engine has seven-hundred-and-fifty gallons of water and three EMTs. That's what puts out the fire quickly. So that's safe.
I'm on board with the chief, I think it's a great idea. Thank you.
I'll open it up to, and I'll go to, I'll make a motion to open it up to.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Once you open it once, we're open, yeah.
So this, this is uh in Ward two, and um obviously I represent that area, and I've had a lot of concerns of what's coming up. I talked to you briefly about this, so. Um, I thought it would be good to just ask you directly if you can go through this, so bear with me for, for a little bit. Is there any concerns over the size of the roads, the safe, the public safety for the kids walking um around there? The Erie Street is a mess, right? It's an absolute mess there, and there's no sidewalks. So is it, if, if, you know, the, the flavor of the day seems like it's, it's gonna get some consensus here. Is there anything we could do to offset some of that, to make sure that we're, we're doing this safely?
So one thing Cummings is planning to do is paint out the back parking lot in, in yellow, a grid, so that, that everybody understands, if you're in the lot, that's for us, you know? And when our guys leave, currently every member that runs on Engine four now is across the street from the Goodyear. They understand children being dropped off and probably more than any of the other engine companies. And typically, when they leave the station, the lights come on, okay? The lights always come on. As they get out to um the main roads, Monville or Washington, as they encounter traffic, they would probably have to put the audible sirens on.
When they get to the main road?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um, and I'm not sure it's any different uh from there or.
I think it's, maybe it's worth saying, I guess, you know, our guys, who, the gals who are responding to these calls, they're very cautious, you know? They know that it doesn't help to have an incident when you're on your way to an incident, so they're extremely cautious. They understand.
Yeah.
You know, if we were to move over here to Henshaw, there's additional considerations with tighter roads, tighter turns. I think, I feel comfortable saying they would be mindful of that. They would understand the sensitivity of the neighborhood. Um, you know, as the chief says, they're used to operating around the Goodyear School at all hours of the day and night, drop off. Um, it's a, it's a point worth making, but I do have a comfort level about guys and gals.
We, we would have a training day on.
Right, but as far as the, the actual Erie Street is, it, it's a tough road over there, and there are no sidewalks, so that's different than what's at Station uh, or, or the other side.
We can develop a plan to take the best route out, and then unless it changes for whatever reason, always use that best route, the better route.
Right, I mean Albany Street, that's less of a bargain, I think. It's really, really tight there. But again, if there's a possibility of doing something with Erie Street, to pave that road, because it is, if you drive down there, and I'm sure you have, it's, it's, it's in tough condition.
Well, as you know, this is the time of year where we're beginning the paving review.
Yeah.
Uh, we'll, we'll take a look at it again.
Yeah.
Um, you know, as you know, we rate the roads and this whole process, and we try to come up with the, the best use of those limited funds. But we can certainly take a look at Erie Street and see where it falls in line with all the others.
Because if you looked at the road, I, I mean, it, it, I, it would be hard to believe that wouldn't qualify, honestly, and then.
It, it probably qualifies, the question is, how many other roads are like that that qualify as well, and, you know, we've been through this before.
I understand.
We'll certainly take a closer look at it this time around, given the, the heavy.
This could be for fourteen months. It, it, we don't know how long it's gonna take, but they're saying, what, twelve to fourteen? We're saying eighteen, just to be.
Totally understand. Um, what equipment is it gonna be housed there? You started to.
Well, our Engine four.
Okay, so what's in there for apparatus?
Just the one engine with three guys on it.
Okay.
And there's the possibility of um sat- satelliting a third ambulance out of there. But it would just be during the day when the city swells with population, so it would be, it would put away in the.
That's a pilot program, and we've been contemplating, and it kinda came to the, to the fore before this Cummings opportunity came up. Because we thought Engine four would be housed at headquarters, spawning from there to East Woburn. So in that scenario, we thought maybe it would give East Woburn a better comfort level if we did a pilot program during the day with an ambulance. Maybe, you know, glean some information from whether that, that actually works, whether it's necessary, whether it's, you know, breaks even, whether it costs us money. So, so that pilot program was on the table primarily because we thought we'd be responding from headquarters.
Yeah, and it had a start and a finish.
Yeah.
The pilot program.
So when, when this opportunity came up, we didn't simply discount the ambulance pilot program, we thought maybe it could complement what's over there too. So to answer your question, the most you'd see over there is the Engine four and an ambulance.
Okay, got it. And what's the timeframe that you think the, the buildup would have? When will we start using it approximately?
Cummings needs forty-five days to build it out, so forty-five, forty-five days from the day we tell them to go, but we're getting tight. Because we wanna stay on schedule for the building.
Yeah.
Of uh Station four, and we, we really need to make that happen in the month of April, the end of April.
And that's a good point, Bill.
Yeah.
You know, we understand that there's a special permit request for Station four going through the process. No one's trying to get out ahead of ourselves here.
Yeah.
We're just trying to be ready. If the city council sees fit to approve that special permit, allow us to rebuild the station.
Yep.
We'd be shooting for, you know, mid to late April, when all of this starts happening. See fences going up around Station four, you see the crews move over to Henshaw.
Yeah.
And then uh construction of the, of the building begins.
Okay, and would the trucks be coming from the front of the building, or the back of the building, or both?
It's the back of the building.
Back.
If you're, if you're at Lehman Park, looking at the, the stretcher buildings, it's in the back, so they'd be coming around and.
Okay, that's, that's better, because when I drove through there, because that's buttoned right up against those houses.
Yeah, it's in the back.
Okay, it's in the back, thank you.
It's uh four F is the number.
Okay. You covered some of these questions over here, Erie Street, public safety. So that, those are the two things that I wanted to bring up, is that the streets and the sidewalks from a safety standpoint. So we could give some consideration to that. Um, and I know that there's people from that area that wanted to come and speak, so mechanically, I don't know if that's possible.
I'll make a motion that we allow the public to speak.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
I will for a second. I am Maureen Claver, and I live at three Erie Street, and to begin with, I have the most utmost respect in everything dealing with our fire department. But in all honesty, it does not belong on the end of Erie Street. We have a small road, no sidewalks. The traffic that we put up with every day is unbelievable. You're gonna have a trailer truck coming down one side, got the bid, there's an emergency. You're gonna have a fire truck coming up at the same time, whose lawn is which gonna drive over to get up our street? There's children there. If, like I said, if there's an emergency coming up, I know if it was coming to my house, I would want it there in two seconds flat too. But it just is an area that is so congested and so tight, it really just does not belong there. And as I, I don't mean disrespect in any way, but it is just a congested, congested, very, very tight area. That's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Please be able to state your name and address for the record.
Josephine Schmonte, twenty-four Erie Street. I live at the corner of, of our um Erie and Albany Street. And I've been there since nineteen seventy-two, and over the years, I mean, it was, it was a relatively quiet area when we moved in. But over time, we've had an influx of more and more traffic, and as Maureen already mentioned, the street is quite narrow. And that's something that the engines are gonna have to deal with. So I have a question, basically. Have you looked at any other alternate sites, say maybe around Albany, no, around Olympia or Wildwood? That Cummings, uh Mr. Cummings may possibly own?
I think this is the matter. Yeah, we really, we really haven't, because we had a plan. The plan was to have everything from Station four moved to headquarters and make it work for eighteen months as best we could, knowing that the response times were, were pushing. They were doable, but they were pushing.
Okay.
That was the plan. We were ready to execute that plan, and then this literally fell in our lap. It was represented from Cummings, ran into a representative of the fire department. Said, hey, so you know, this ambulance company that had been operating there, they're gone. Would you guys have any interest? That was really the first time we explored anything other than the HQ option. So we haven't, and, and I, I don't want to spend much more time trying to find another option, because I wouldn't want that to delay the, the construction of the building itself. So I would suggest that if we don't seize this option, we'll probably revert back to the headquarters option, so we can stay on schedule with the building, unless you think of us.
I mean, it, it is unique in that it's a, let's say, uh, it's a location that has a large overhead door. I don't know how many other options Cummings would do.
So we do have to fit the trucks inside?
Yes.
Right.
So there, there are just what, basically two? Just the, uh, the ambulance and one fire engine?
Yes.
And, and we could, um, just to cut it in half, uh, keep with a plan of running our ambulance out of headquarters, adjust the engine. It, it, that, that is something we could do. Cut, cut, cut our traffic in half.
Okay, I was curious about the pilot program that you mentioned, and we heard ambulance, so.
Yeah, the idea would be to, initially to try to keep that ambulance in that neighborhood, so that the response time for most of our calls, which are medical, is, is shortest possible. That's, that's the idea kind of, but part of the reason we're doing it is to learn information. So if we learned it doesn't need to be there, then we wouldn't do that.
Thank you so much.
Any other members of the public have a comment? Bring it back to the council. Council Dylan.
Thank you.
President Dylan, I'm sorry.
Thank you. Chief.
Yes, sir.
Probably a tough question to answer, but you, you know all the answers. On a twenty-four hour cycle, how often do you have an idea that that engine would leave out on calls?
So the engine would probably, on average, it, it could be ten times a day.
In a twenty-four hour cycle, ten times?
Yeah.
Okay, um, so I guess my next question is, and I don't know if anyone here in this room can answer it. How often did an ambulance leave when that particular site was used, that is housing the ambulance company that was there?
Right, uh, probably more often.
More often, and I guess obviously the difference is the size of the equipment that you have to take into effect for the neighbors. My next question is, may or may not be concern for the neighbors, is when do you turn the audibles on? Is it, and again, I'm learning here, is it when you're in a residential neighborhood? Is there a policy that you would try not to wake the people up at two in the morning or?
Right, we always try that. I, I was, as I was kind of alluding before, we would probably, if um, the lights would come on for safety as soon as you pull out of the bay. The audible stuff is when, say, they go out to Washington and there's a line of traffic and it's during the middle of the day. In the evening, I'm not anticipating that, and our guys will look to see the people stop, and they may not.
Very good.
But I'm sure you all, you all hear the sirens.
Thank you, chief.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Councilor Mercer.
Thank you. Um, I, I really hope we can come up with a compromise. I've known you all for a very long time. Um, but I've had a lot of experience watching the trucks come and go on Central Street. Um, usually every two years for eighteen hours a day, seven in the morning till eight at night, and I watch them come and go, come and go. Very rarely do I, did I hear the sirens ever, even when it got dark. Very rarely did I get any complaints ever from the neighbors in that area about the fire trucks or the ambulances. I will say that street is a little tight over there, but it's certainly closer to where you need to be. I, um, I think the idea about Olympia or um Washington, whatever, that's a great idea. Someday, we actually could use a fire station just up in that area. Um, but to get to those places that this station needs to go, I think could actually be life threatening with some of the traffic that is going on over there. Um, so I hope we can come to a compromise, maybe with the, the ambulance not being there.
We can make that happen.
You know, this is Billy's ward, so obviously I defer to him, but um I don't think anybody in this room would ever, ever put anyone in harm's way. Um, I don't think it's gonna be a terrible inconvenience for a short amount of time, but I would like to see a compromise. Um, I am gonna make a motion, um, in terms of the, the money from the receipts, mayor, the ambulance receipts. I'd like just to make a request, the city council send a note to the city auditor, Charles Doherty, to provide the council with details as to where we have recently, over the last two years, transferred some of that ambulance receipt money to. Just so we can be prepared, if we don't have it, to know where we might have to put it. Give us a better idea of the budget.
The second, do I have a? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
And my only other comment is, um, the Cummings property has been extremely generous to the city of late. I mean, they donated property uh for us recently on something else. It's not like they gave us a great deal here. Um, I just want us to be mindful um of those things. I mean, all the time we take donations from people. I just wanna remind the council, no matter what, uh, we still always have to, um, there's no quid pro quo. Is that the right word to say here? I just wanna be mindful of that. Uh, people have asked me that question, so I'm asking it in public, well, what happens if they want this or what they want that? There's the whole public hearing process, none of that goes away. Um, so again, it was asked to me, so I brought it up.
Chief appointed the Community Resource Center donation of space was no quid pro quo, nothing has been asked for. Uh, the chief has been dealing with Mike Truesdale from Cummings on this uh for.
And we are paying, we are paying money, yeah.
No quid pro quo. Any potential request in the future from the people generously donating stuff, those requests will be dealt with on their own merits
Yeah.
and decisions that we made based on whether those are in the best interest of the city.
Again, so.
The building upgrades is something they'll enjoy when we.
The benefits act.
Yeah, that's, that's not for us.
And we're contributing to those um future benefits.
Yes.
And again, I think it's an important point to make because people have inquired, so I, I appreciate you both um, um, talking about it here tonight. So that's all I have to say, and I'm hopeful we come up with a compromise tonight.
Councilor Alaj Toral?
Thank you. Uh, so I'm in support of this lease. I think, you know, in a perfect world, the location isn't completely ideal. I know some of the, uh, some of the concerns that were raised, um, but being a former spot that an ambulance company ran keeps our, our apparatus in our ward or in that area. Uh, Councilor Mercer Bruin alluded to it, you know, it's the public safety, it's critical, it could be the difference between life and death, right? I know moving to headquarters, we're still within response time, but on the higher end, that change in time, that extra however many seconds could be the difference between a, a life. Uh, and this is temporary. I, I certainly wouldn't love it if it was in my area, but it is a temporary solution uh to get our new fire station built, and again, keep business as usual. Um, I think personally that the chief and all the staff there will take all necessary precautions to make sure that the, uh, the citizens within that area that are most impacted are dealt with, and if there are concerns that come up after you move there, um, I'm sure everyone would be receptive to try to figure out a solution, uh, because it is temporary, but it's not a couple months, right? It's, it's twelve, fourteen, sixteen, eighteen months.
To that point, the, the engine, the plan is for the engine to be located there twenty-four seven, responding twenty-four seven. If we did proceed with a pilot program to have a third ambulance on that side of the city, it would only be Monday through Friday, you know, when the businesses are active. If it's any consolation, the ambulances wouldn't be leaving Henshaw Street at two in the morning. They wouldn't, they wouldn't be there. This would just be, if the pilot program were to come about, it would be during business hours only, so I don't know if that helps.
That's it, thank you. Councilor DeMurs.
So, you know, when it, when it comes to an issue like this, you know, we've been, and we've been involved in a lot of difficult decisions since I've been on the council with regards to, you know, taking into consideration local residents' concerns and weighing them against mostly private purposes. And I, when I look at this purpose, it's for the public good, for public safety. My concern is if we move this over to GH, uh, to, over to HQ, um, I think all of us have seen what Main Street can look like at some of our busy hours during the day, and while those response times are projections, I don't think we'd be able to meet our responsibility to the citizens of East Woburn by running both the ambulance and the truck out of, uh, or the engine out of uh, uh, especially if it's averaging on ten calls a day. Uh, so my, my primary concern there is the general welfare of the public over in East Woburn. Um, I also have a selfish concern, whereas I'm the ward counselor for Ward four, and headquarters is in my ward. So that would be added traffic, and that would be added concerns of my constituents, that we'd have more ambulatory or more, or fire truck trips um out of, out of HQ. Uh, as a resident who lives a hundred yards away from HQ, I can tell you that at first it was an adjustment with the sirens. Say my air conditioning was probably on a lot more often. Say, my air conditioner was probably on a lot more often during the summer. But I know for a fact that overnight, the employees of the Woburn Fire Department do their very best to throw the lights on. And unless they need the sirens to inform motorists that are out on the road, they're generally pretty quiet around residential areas if they can be. You basically just see the lights on and then they go and get to that emergency call. So I'd like to make a suggestion that, you know, if we ought to move forward on this to create a neighborhood safety plan that, you know, maybe the Ward Alderman, the Fire Department and the mayor can look at it every six months if we're looking at an eighteen-month buildout, where we reach out and get some of the concerns from the neighbors again to see if there's problems that we might have committed to resolve at the beginning, if it gets a little lax maybe, or there's something that comes up during this process where we can reach back out to the neighbors and get additional feedback on the operations that are existing. And I know for a fact we can build out certain provisions where, you know, the training of the employees of that temporary site, you know, at night, don't throw the lights, don't throw the sirens on until you get to a certain point and so forth. It's just one of those things where, when it comes to a public purpose for the public good, unfortunately, there's sacrifices that certain neighborhoods make. But I know that my constituents would want to make sure that the response time stayed the same in that area. And I think most people, if reasonable accommodations could be made, would come around to allowing that.
And that is the driver's job. We had in place an adequate plan. This is a better plan. We think it's reasonable, prudent. We think it's a reasonable amount of money. It just makes it better than it would have been, so that's why we're here. Thank you, Mr. ...
Councilor DeMurs?
So, am I to see on the GIS as well as going down there? I already see tractor-trailer trucks in that area. I'm seeing box trucks in that area, twenty to twenty-six.
It's a commercial area.
It's a commercial area. There's trailer trucks down there, and there's delivery trailer trucks. There's everything. There's the whole hog market. Plus, we got the Amazon delivery trucks and FedEx delivery trucks. So you got grape and you got Erie. The number one concern, I have, I agree with my counsel from Ward Four, it's about the public safety and response times. I've lived on, where I've lived on School Street for fifty-three years, and Station Two is at the end of my street. And I can tell you to this day, those trucks still go by my house because they come up Alfred Street, the Grand Michelin, the Grand School, constantly. And I will tell you this, ninety-nine percent of the time after dark, it's just the lights. And let me tell you, I'm only twenty-five feet off the street, and those lights, they'll light your house up like a disco, but there's no noise. It's all about the response times. And I have to say, I also, I listen to the scanner, everybody makes fun of me, but I do listen to the scanner, and I listen to the response times with rescues. Rescues, they're constantly on call in the city. The engines are constantly on call in the city. We have a lot of volume going through our fire stations. Again, I just, I understand your concerns, and I am sure the men and women trained in our fire department to handle those vehicles, they take every precaution necessary. They're trained to take precautions when they're driving those vehicles. And they will make every effort, I am sure, to be as safe, because they are the safety, they're the safety guys and gals. I see this as a benefit. I know it's a discomfort, and it's going to be a small one for eighteen months. I understand that. But it's also to benefit the community as a whole, again, for response times. Because when there's an emergency, every second counts. And I cannot see, and I really, I have a hard time supporting a rescue or an engine coming out of Station Four because it is quite far away from where the existing Station Four is. And when there's peak traffic between the hours of four and six P M., and no one's going to tell me about traffic because I see it every morning, noon and night, seven days a week, it's important that, you know, they get there with the shortest amount of distance possible. And there are the knuckleheads out there that don't listen or see the vehicles coming. How? I have no idea. And that's when they have to light it up and they have to put the sound on. But I will say, and I've lived there my whole life, and they're constantly going by my house, they take every effort to keep in mind the peace of the public. Thank you.
Councilor Elijah Ferro?
Just briefly, if we're going to do it, I think we should do it both pieces of apparatus, not just for the easy to the neighborhoods, but in order to access ninety-three northbound and from the Bell's weight little piece there, the extended response time, although doable, that adds a ton of time to it. And I just think a transport vehicle when you're on a scene waiting for an ambulance, they need to be close. And I just think that if we're going to do it, it makes sense to do them both. And I know that may not be the popular decision. But when you're waiting for a transport and you're going to get somebody in Winchester, you're close enough, you could walk them down the street. But it's something that if we're going to do it, do them both or do neither at all. But I think the ambulance has a place over there. Just a thought.
Councilor Mercer-Bruin?
Yeah, I just, my comment has nothing to do with what we've already talked about except to say when we are looking at the street. I know that we have a process, Mayor, and I know that we're supposed to be in the right pecking order and all that. But I would ask that we give extra consideration to this particular street because, not only because of the trucks coming in and out, but the existing trucks. So maybe we can find a way to make a commitment to the neighbors that will get complete, whether it's before this happens, but perhaps after. That would be one of my recommendations.
Councilor Papalatto?
And I do appreciate it. It's a double edged sword because we want to get your pieces out there as quickly as we can. It's an inconvenience certainly to the neighborhood. But I would urge to, what you said is, if we could do something about that street and we could do something to put some type of sidewalk in there from a public safety standpoint, that would be appreciated by all of the neighbors, I'll tell you that.
I can pledge to you, we'll definitely take a closer look at it.
Yep.
You know, there's another consideration now because our own fire apparatus will be traveling through there. I hear you.
Right.
I can't, as I sit here right now, pledge that it's going to be paved. I need to go back and talk to the engineer, the superintendent, look at the list again, see what other street would be knocked off the list if we did this. What's the structure sidewalk that, you know, I got to look at, but I promise you I'll look at.
That, thank you.
From the chair, I'd just like to say that I agree with what Councilor Elijah Ferro said. If we were to go forward with this, it does make more sense to have the fire apparatus and the ambulance there as response times coming from HQ could drastically be longer than what it would be from over here on Henshaw Street. And just a word of caution that if you do decide, if you do decide to pave that road, just keep in mind you're going to have the fire truck driving up and down on it. It's probably going to be worn out even quicker. So I would just urge caution paving it now rather than after the fire department's out of there.
Counselor? Counselor DeMurs?
What is the projected date for you wanting, if you were to, if we were to approve or grant the authority to enter a lease?
The date?
Yeah, the date we want staffing out of Engine Four?
Probably mid to late April.
Okay. So we do have some time where we can try and work on accommodations here before an action would be required to be made?
Well, my Cummings needs some lead time to open up the opening a little bit more, put the new door in. It's a little bit of work to be done in terms of the accommodations for the bunks, the kitchen. So what I was hoping for is if this council, this committee voted out to pass and the council blesses it on the eighteenth, we can then give Cummings a heads up, knowing that the special permit process is still ongoing and not trying to box anyone into anything. But we're already operating with a bit of a condensed timeline. I prefer that if this committee is so willing to approve this at committee level tonight, we can pledge to you that these issues, these considerations, this working with the neighborhood and our operational plans, we will do that. And we will make sure that the training is done before the crews open up over there and they understand the particular sensitivities to this neighborhood. I mean, I guess I'd be asking for a little bit of leeway that we allow the chief to make all of that happen, but not delay the process by weeks or months. Because the longer we take, the longer it takes for Cummings to make it ready for us.
Would it be more prudent to send it back for action? And in the meantime, Counselor Papalatto, maybe I'll volunteer to assist in possibly coming up with some language that addresses some of the concerns?
I'll make that in the form of a motion.
I want to defer to you, Bill.
I think that's a great idea.
I'm gladly working with you on some condition language that we can attach to this as we vote to approve the grant of lease at the next meeting if there's a vote.
I'll make that in the form of a motion. We send it back for action.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries?
So we meet next week?
Yep. Yep. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Thank you.
All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Stand adjourned at six forty-five.
That was a long one, buddy.
Right, I'll call the Committee on Personnel to Order. On the committee is myself, Councilor DeMurs, Councilor Toro and Councilor Campbell. Councilor Campbell is absent this evening, so I will be acting as acting chair. Our first item on the agenda is a reading and approval of meeting minutes from the meeting of January twenty-seven, twenty twenty-five. Is there a motion to just not do the reading and approval? I'll move. I'll second that. All those in favor? Okay, first item on the agenda is the appointment of Anthony Langone Jr. to the Woburn Redevelopment Authority.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you, Anthony.
Thank you, sir.
I think everyone here is familiar with Anthony. He has served the city admirably in a couple of different roles previous to this. His, I'll let him speak to it, but his employment status, his work situation changed for the better and has now allowed him to jump back in and continue to serve the city. And after meeting with him and speaking with members of the WRA and the Planning Department, we felt this would be a great fit for Anthony to bring his energy, his enthusiasm, his knowledge of Woburn, his commitment to the city. We think he can really help advance the WRA. So I'm really happy to present him tonight. He's available for any questions.
Anthony, if you could tell us a little bit about yourself, although most of us know you already.
No, so I'm born and raised in Woburn. I joined the Air Force back in twenty-eleven and moved back here in twenty-eighteen. And since then, I kind of hit the ground running. I started with Jim Dwyer up at the State House, went from Rep Hagerty to there. I really found a new appreciation for our community here, and I think that's why so many people want to be here. Since then, I wanted to get engaged locally. I was happy to be on the Traffic Commission where I got a pretty good understanding of some of the challenges we face there as we continue to rapidly develop. On the Conservation Commission as well, I really understood some of the land use. I learned a little bit more about zoning and things like that and how to better use our city land. And then from there, as Mike said, I was able to get away from the O C P F. Now I'm kind of free to get involved again locally. Community development is very important to me. When I talked to the mayor about this opportunity, I am very eager, and even talking to Doug in the hallway, I feel like this is something that, there's so much going on where you look at what's going to happen on New Boston Street, what's happening in our center throughout the city, Central Square is a big topic right now. There's a lot of opportunity to provide a kind of a guiding board to help make some of these decisions. Something in military term, but it's more of a force multiplier. You're able to kind of get more bodies on the ground to get engaged and really help drive some of that community development. So I'm hoping I can play an active role, leverage my experience, my enthusiasm, get to work with all you, which is pretty great to me. So thank you for the time tonight. Answer any questions.
Councilor Toro, any questions or comments?
I think the mayor's selection of you for the Woburn Redevelopment Authority is awesome. I'm glad that you want to stay involved in the city. I think you're an asset to the city. So I appreciate your service on iron and look forward to working with you.
I echo Councilor Toro's sentiments. I know, Anthony, we've talked about my vision for hopefully an expanded role for the Woburn Redevelopment Authority. I know I've talked to the mayor and some of the other councillors. So we're quite bullish that we've got some new blood on that Redevelopment Authority to kind of push it forward and expand those, like overall macro level look at redevelopment in Woburn as we move forward. So I'm proud to vote for your appointment. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to open up to non-voting members. Second, all those in favor? Counselor DeMurs?
Anthony, I think you're a great pick for this. I've known you quite a few years now. You've been involved in the City Traffic Committee. You're an asset to the city. And I think in the direction this city is going, we need guys like you, sharp, articulate. And you're also, you're going to be here a long time. You're going to be here for decades to come. And that's what we need. Because you're invested in the community and you're going to be here for a while, in a long, long time. Probably a Woburnite, I would consider you. We need that on the Woburn Redevelopment Authority because we want that smart growth. We need people with that mentality. When we grow, we grow smart. We don't want, we don't want to, you know, just have things fall out of the sky like, you know, times ago and we try to glue it together and try to make it work. It would be nice if we had the articulate, the planning and the enthusiasm that you've... So I am on board with this. I support you. Thank you as a friend, and thank you for doing this.
Counselor, thanks a lot to me.
Councilor Mercer-Bruin?
Thank you, Anthony. I'm so excited that you're going to be joining the Redevelopment Authority. I enjoyed working with you when you were on the Traffic Commission, and I was on the other side begging for this. So thank you for that. I know Councilor DeMurs has been sounding the alarm for many years about the work that we need to do down in Woburn Center. And I'm really hoping we can see some of that come to fruition, especially in terms of like sign continuity and simple things that you would think would be simple, right? But we've been talking about for so many years. That would make a huge difference. So yay.
Looking forward to it.
Welcome.
Thank you so much.
Counselor Val.
Thank you. Anthony, I was happy to hear when an opening came up that you were interested in, and the mayor put you forward. Definitely would be in favor of supporting you tonight and look forward to see what you do with the WRA.
Thank you, Counselor.
Counselor Papalatto?
Welcome aboard. I'm the liaison to the Redevelopment Authority, and I think it's time for some fresh blood in there. And I think you've got a lot of great, you have a lot of great ideas and a lot of input into things, and it'll be a positive experience.
Looking forward to working with you.
President Dylan?
Thank you. Anthony, I've had the great opportunity to work with you on a lot of projects. So I'm amazed continually the appointments that Mayor Concanon has done. And tonight, two incredible ones here. You are mature beyond your years. You're always there to help the community, to volunteer. It's, I almost feel guilty when I call you because you never say no. And I'm sure it interferes with some family life, but you really do a great job. As Councilor DeMurs and I have downtown, at part of our wards, it's really important to us. So I'm really thrilled with these two appointments coming in front of us tonight. So thank you very much.
Any other members vote?
I'll make a motion that the appointment of Anthony Langone Jr. to the Woburn Redevelopment Authority be sent out on the bus.
I'll second that. All those in favor?
Aye.
Carries two nothing. Thank you, Anthony.
Thanks so much. Thanks, everybody.
Next item on the agenda is the appointment of Douglas Olander to the Woburn Redevelopment Authority.
Equally excited to present to you another candidate for the WRA. As you know, we did have a couple of members whose work circumstances changed. They needed to leave the WRA. We appreciate all their service. They were great members. But it presents an opportunity for, as you said, some new blood, some new ideas, some new perspective. So in addition to Anthony, we also have the opportunity to bring Doug on board. Historically, the WRA has tried to include a member of the downtown business community for that perspective. As you know, Doug's affiliated with Lynch Cantillon, one of Woburn's premier downtown businesses. And I think he'll bring a lot to the table with that perspective. He's in touch with the other business owners downtown. And I think with Anthony and Doug, and we're waiting on the governor's appointment, we'll have a reconstituted, but really strong WRA board going forward. So again, I'm really happy to present Doug to you when he's available for any questions.
Doug, tell us a little bit about yourself and what makes you a fit for the Woburn Redevelopment Authority.
My name is Douglas Olander. For those of you who don't know me, born and raised in Woburn here, graduated two thousand and six out of Woburn High. Just recently, I've started developing my own family. And also, I was lucky enough to be born into a family that has a multi-generational family business. to be born into a family that has a multi-generational family business here, just on the south side of Woburn, where I gladly partake in co-owner and the day-to-day transactions. I am familiar with the downtown areas. I'm there all the time. Also bring my children down for all the festivities, pizza, ice cream, you know, always down in the center walking around. And you always see things like, hey, maybe this would be better, maybe this would be better. And now I have an opportunity to put it on the table. And I take great pride in my city and be great to revamp it. And speaking with Anthony, he's got some great ideas too. And I can't wait to put our heads together and do the work.
Councilor Charo?
Doug, I don't, I don't know you personally, but seems like you have a great Woburn background. I know your family business pretty well. Seems like you'll be a great addition to the Woburn Redevelopment Authority too. So I'd support your, your appointment.
Any non-voting members? Same. Councilor Mr. Brown?
Thank you. Welcome. And if there's anything at all this City Council can do to help enable the work that you all are going to do for our city, please remember, we're here to support you as well. Welcome, welcome.
Thank you.
President Dillon?
Thank you. Doug, welcome aboard. I, I do know you personally. Personally as well, and again, mature beyond your years, part of a great Woburn family. And I know you do a great job. It's, it's exciting to see some of these changes, just instead of some of these old guys like Chief and I, some young people at all. It really is exciting. So good luck and thank you.
How about Bill?
Bill's younger than us.
Councilor Demambro?
Doug, congratulations. Welcome aboard. I think you're, I think you're a good fit. You know, even the business of Lynch Cantillon, I know you through there. It's an unbelievable business. You guys have done a lot for our city. So I'm looking forward. Again, you know, we, we want the younger guys to come in and gals to start participating and helping out. Because, you know, the older guys like, you know, President Dillon said, at some point, they're going to retire. But you know what? Love best to you. You know, we need, we need the next, you know, I guess you could say generation of Woburn, like stick them back in and, and help us along. So I, I look forward to working with you. If there's anything I can do, my phone's on twenty-four seven. Give me a call.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Any other question? Council Papalato?
Again, welcome. You'll do a great job. I, everything I said about Anthony, I mean same thing about you. I don't want to see you except in the meetings because I don't want to like be hanging around down at Lynch Cantillon. But anyway, welcome aboard.
Thank you very much.
What's the other?
I'll make a motion that the appointment of Douglas Olander to the Woburn Redevelopment Authority be sent out octopus.
I'll make a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Congrats.
Is there a motion to return to the regular order?
So moved.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye. Congratulations.
Thank you, man.
Oh, I know. I saw that. Someone want to talk about it? Why did she want to talk?
Yes. Yeah. Go ahead. It was just all at once. Yeah.
We just have one.
Oh, I'll make. That's how my bill died on the floor at midnight. I've been there, you know. I've killed a few bills.
Okay, I'm going to call the Committee on Special Permits to Order. I have Councilor Mars, I'm sorry.
He jumped a gun. I was jumping.
Councilor Mr. Brown, I'm the chairman of the committee. Also on the committee is Councilor Campbell, who is absent this evening. Councilor Demambro, Councilor Vala, and Councilor Demers. We only have one item on tonight's agenda, and that is the Tesla Inc. for special permit under five point one point five six to install three Tesla Supercharger cabinets, twelve Tesla charge posts, one utility transformer, one sixteen hundred A twenty-seven, twenty-seventy-seven four hundred and eighty volt switchgear, one utility pole, two light poles, two waifens, and all associated underground conduit routing and site work at four twenty-five Washington Street.
And Chair, I'll make a motion that we approve the minutes from the previous meeting.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And we also have two communications. I'm going to ask that we accept the one that's specific to four twenty-five Washington Street.
So.
Second.
I am going to ask Councilor Vala if he will chair tonight's meeting. This is in my ward, and I have a lot of questions. Might be better for you to sort of keep things moving if you don't mind.
Sure.
What's that? Oh, yeah. Did you call the roll for the minute acceptance?
Yeah.
I did.
Is there, is there? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries.
What was the vote on that?
I'm sorry, I missed it.
That was to approve the minutes.
No, no, no. That was to accept the communication.
I'm sorry. Take that back.
For four twenty-five Washington.
Yeah, four twenty-five Washington.
Good evening.
Nice to meet you. I'm Mendo, we're the design manager with Tesla. Appreciate you seeing us tonight. Thank you for the program. It was pretty good. I know we've met with some of you all.
Try to do it in one's room.
I probably did a better job than I could. So yeah, I know we met with you all a couple of weeks ago, so I'm happy to provide a summary. If you just want to over and off your questions, we'll be best bet, I guess. Thank you.
Pleasure.
Councilor Mr. Brown?
Yes, sir. Have you seen Commissioner Quinn's memo?
I have. So I think I have, would you like me to sort of address those by starting?
Yes. So first, let's talk about the survey plan, right, that shows the location of the structures because there was a lot of concern specifically about that. Originally, I think they were over by the residential area along the fence.
Yep. So to adjust the survey, we did perform a full Alta survey, fully locate, a full title search, to do anything like property lines, setbacks. And we tried to place this equipment in posts in the most wantful area. So this equipment did have an earlier iteration than maybe you're referring to. But yeah, so essentially, this is the Coles property. So I guess if you're looking at the Coles and you turn ninety degrees to your left, we're sort of in the corner of the parking lot over there.
Over by the medical building?
I can show you on our plan slightly here if you'd like.
So what I was alluding to during the public hearing is that the original plan, I think that Inspector Commissioner Quinn saw and that I saw, the cars were much closer to the residential, along the new fencing. It's just recently put in.
So it's along Washington Street, about as far, again, if you're looking at Coles, you turn ninety degrees to your left, about as far that way as you can go. So not, it's, but it's across the way from the residential area. So here's the Coles right here.
Could you turn it just a second? Sorry, it's kind of.
So this is the Coles, the white building here. I don't know if you can see my cursor on the car screen here now. But here's our row of parking where we're proposing the DC fast charge posts. That's where the cars physically charge. And then we have some support equipment that's going in this existing landscaped area. So it's sort of.
Still not getting it. Sorry, got to speak up.
Okay.
So.
Can you see my cursor?
I can see your cursor.
This is Coles in the, in the shopping building.
So Alta, right?
Yep.
Is right here. This is Alta, right here.
At the very edge of the property, yeah.
Right here. Right there. Okay. To the left of that is all the, the new fencing and the neighbors. And then, of course, the neighbors behind the building. So now we're going to go the other way.
Along Washington Street.
The other way.
Nope.
Oh, okay. Then we need to stop the conversation. The, the stations should be down at the other end of the parking lot.
So there's a few reasons we couldn't do that. So we need to be on the perimeter of the parking. If we need to go on the interior, it causes a problem for a few reasons because our charge posts would have to be placed at the spine of the parking. So if you have back-to-back parking stalls, you have the spine in the middle where the two cars would like meet if they were pulling in, it would mess with the dimensions, the length or the width, and we'd be out of compliance. So what we do is we try to intentionally be along the perimeter so that we can put our charge posts behind the existing curb line and not mess with the parking dimensions. Also, it's a huge issue in the Northeast with snow plowing. If you just have these posts in the center of a parking lot, the plows just get out there and they knock them over all the time. And then if you, this has a funky property line, this property, the property line runs just behind the curb line where we're proposing our posts. We actually have to bump in the curb slightly to get inside the property line. If you were to continue down this side of the property on the perimeter, the property line actually cuts in towards those parking stalls. So.
So you're familiar with where the medical building is? Yes?
In this building here?
No, it's a standalone building.
Okay.
In the parking lot.
Let me zoom out. Wait, my. Okay, here, this sort of satellite building you're referring to?
Yep, it's a satellite building.
Okay.
Right up against the highway.
Okay.
There are no residents. Very similar to the situation we have down at Target, right? So they're not in the middle of the parking lot at all. They're up against, you know, the, the other street. They're not in the middle, so they're not in the way of the plows. So that's where I'm suggesting these things go. Not in the middle of the lot. They certainly won't be in the middle, you know, the plow area.
So that's, that's what I'm referring to. So we have to avoid these interior parking, existing parking stalls here. So here's your perimeter.
See this building right here?
Yep.
This is the highway. Yes. Okay. I'm talking about behind that building. You see these spots right there?
You're talking about this perimeter rail here?
This perimeter, right here. It's right along the highway. Not going to bother any residents. People can charge, charge all they want.
So let me just pull up. So I'll have to pull up, it's in the parcel line here, the red of the entire, obviously our lease, the Kimco comes this year. So we survey where we would like to be, right? So we have a survey that kind of captures this part of the property. But this is basically an estimation of where this property line falls based on eye-level data, the site re-grid that we use, just to pull up parcel lines. We don't believe we have the space on the property line for our charge posts and our support equipment to fall within the private parcel where we would have a lease where we execute with Kimco.
Okay, so this is a registered land survey that's been completed, yes?
This is a registered survey. But what I'm saying is, so in our lease agreement with Kimco, we lease out the stalls where we want to be, and we survey from here up. So like this survey from this half of the property is like fifteen thousand bucks. I don't, I can pull another survey if we have to, but we had reason to believe that we didn't want to look at this because our posts, and again, support charge equipment, it falls right behind this parking row. We don't think we can fit our equipment and charge posts behind that parking row. So we look like, because of the way the property line sort of tapers out slightly behind the perimeter up there, is why we looked at that area first. And one of the reasons we look at it too is because if you kind of look at this overhead image, there's quite a few more patrons that park here. And we stall, we don't police our tow, you know, tow customers.
Oh, I know. We're going to get.
Okay. Anyone could technically park there. We want to be in stalls that are sort of less primo stalls, like the Woburn site that you're referring to. We're kind of in a corner like this. So it's sort of like half the reason is the dynamics of the existing site, but we also want to be logistically where people would park last so that folks aren't icing what we call in parking in an EV stall that aren't charging. So that's sort of the, some of the logistics of why we ended up there, I guess.
I'm going to take issue with, I'm happy to go out to the lot and you can show me exactly where you want to put these things, but I have to tell you right now, I, I have concerns about.
Okay.
So why don't we move on to number two, if Chairman, do I still have the floor?
You still have the floor.
Thank you. Regarding the buffer zone.
Yep. So.
So I assume your new plans have moved things that would address these concerns from.
Yeah. So again, I can show you. If you could envision this parking row here that we're talking about, here it is in the plans here, this highlighted dashed line here. So this highlighted line behind the curb line is the property line. This one in front of it is the setback limit that we're trying to stay beyond. So that's why, you can see the ugly triangle here, how the setbacks go. That's why we strategically placed the proposed utility transformer and support equipment within those, outside of those setbacks rather. The red line, what you're looking at, and this is my interpretation, you can tell me if I'm wrong, of the residential buffer they're referring to. I believe that's another twenty feet in addition to the setback.
Yeah, it can't be within fifty feet of the boundary line. So probably not a bad idea that we see this mapped out.
Yep, I have it right here.
Not, not here, in person.
Okay.
With Inspector Quinn, unless there's any objection from the Council.
In it.
Go ahead.
Sorry, if I could just, yeah, no, I just wanted to sort of finish that. So looking at the setback on the backside, here's your residential homes here, plus the additional twenty feet, that was again, our interpretation. We tried to find a happy medium of getting as far away from the residential area as possible, but not impeding on the front setback. So it was sort of like the, I guess, the lesser of two evils. You know, we could push it further away. We have plenty of grass landscaping here, but now our equipment is within that setback. So if you told us there was an opportunity maybe to get a variance, we could go that way, but we were trying to be mindful of pushing it as far away from the residential area as possible without impeding on the front setbacks. So that was the thought.
And I'm going to be very honest with you. This is just a bunch of lines, right? I need to, we're going to go to the site, we're going to map it out, then I'll, we'll have an exact visual of the people that are maybe are going to have to look at these things or not. So if, if that's something you're open to, I know Commissioner Quinn certainly is. So there was also the height of the structures. And we could, you're aware of the concern about the height and.
Yeah, I, I, so I saw that there was a statement about that. So.
It appeared to be greater than three feet within the front setback. So
Yep.
we need to be mindful of that because it cannot be.
So again, I think that's, our, our hope is trying to, we moved as much of the equipment as we could out of those setbacks. The posts, because they have to be on the perimeter, have to be within the setback. So that's something, I, I don't know how we could push it out because we would change, again, the existing dimensional regulation on the interior because it's just not.
Might not just be possible in that area. That's a, that's a possibility that it won't be possible, right? So there was a comment by Commissioner Quinn, you just mentioned it yourself, about, you know, we don't restrict anybody from using these parking spots. But nobody would use them the way that they're signed, the right word, I'm not sure, the way the signage is, right? People would automatically assume they're only for Tesla vehicles or only for EVs. So one of the things that I'm going to consider is that we're going to make sure that people know that they're for anyone who wants to park there.
Yeah, if it's EVH concerned, we don't have any signs. There's no signage. It's just the charge post that's there.
Right, similar to Target, right? The only thing that, what it says at Target, it says Tesla. And then the ones that aren't Tesla say parking for EVs only. But the ones that are Tesla just say Tesla. But nobody would park there without a Tesla because they'll assume.
Be surprised. That's why we.
Again, we have some concerns about the amount of parking in this parking. You guys are claiming, you know, anybody can use them. So that might be something we're going to have to consider to make sure people are aware that they can use them, particularly at Christmas time.
Understood.
So also the parking count, have you gone back to recalculate? Because you guys did give up some parking.
So we have a net stall of one loss. I believe there's four hundred and thirty-six total parking spots, and that's just for the ADA that we're required to install for the van existence.
Okay, so just for that?
Correct.
Okay. Not just for that. That's very important.
Yep.
Okay. That's all I have for questions. But I would like to arrange to do a site visit with you and Commissioner Quinn before we meet again next, the eighteenth, I believe, we'll meet again.
Great. Would that be something where we would go there and then have the meetings to follow up, like the same date?
We would go, we would go to the site and then I believe President Dillon, are they on for the eighteen? Oh, I thought, I thought you were scheduled for a meeting for the eighteen.
We'll check it.
But that would be the next time we would meet, at the next public meeting, on the eighteenth. And if it doesn't happen to be that date, then it will be whatever the next date is. But I think it would be.
Okay.
And if I think of anything else in the meantime, we'll certainly. And if I think of anything else, in the meantime, I'll certainly send your email through the clerk.
Thanks.
Thank you very much. I know him a lot. I really like.
No worries, I do love him.
The maps, it's hard, but I really appreciate the visual there too.
It's easier to see in person.
Much.
Counsel Jarrah.
Mr. Accu- Chairman, just a point of procedure. If, if, Madam Chair, if you do this, if you do come to a reasonable agreement with the petitioner, we could always suspend the rules on the 18th, pull the matter from committee, have the conditions applied, and then approve it.
They have on the 18th.
That's what I thought.
Yep. So if it is the 18th, if, if, if your concerns are met, we could always pull it from committee then just to expedite it.
Okay.
If you wouldn't see fit.
Yeah, I certainly don't want to slow it down as long as we can get everything squared.
Of course.
So I'll get up there anytime.
Great, okay.
Any other council members have any issues, concerns, questions?
I, I think Counsel Marson has it underhand and a site visit would be a good idea to visualize. I think so.
I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Some move.
All those in favor?
Thank you very much.
We call the committee on Public Safety and Licenses to order. I'm the chairman of the committee, Counsel Trolle, with me on the committee, Counsel Papalatto, Counsel Campbell, who's absent, Counsel Demers, and the other is Counsel.
Make a motion that we dispense with the reading of previous meeting's minutes and first second.
All in favor?
Aye.
First matter before us tonight is Woburn Host Lions, up for a special event permit for a charity dog walk at Hanheim in area streets April 5th with the request of a waiver for umbrella liability. Action on the motion? You want to, feel free, I'm sorry. I didn't know you guys were going to be here. Want to tell us about your event?
I'll break tomorrow with Chairman, with Chairman, with, for the Woburn Annual Dog Walk, charity dog walk, April 6th, 6th, at 9 to 12. Trying to get that special permit. As of the insurance, last year, what we did was we got two insurance policies, 1 million, 2 million. We bought an additional policy in addition to the Lions, so we did that again this year. Last year, the design that we did was more of a walkthrough booklet to try to cut down on congregation. Just had maybe some pictures taken of dogs and pets at the Lion contest.
We waived this last year and you did the, based on our waiver, you did the same exact policy that you did last year. There was no problems or nothing, right?
No.
Okay. Make a motion that we send this out, the grant of waiver out to pass.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Bring my baby, grandbaby.
The second and final item on the agenda tonight.
Thank you, guys.
Is an application for renewal of a commentary license for transaction clerk with shuttles five willing at Woburn. Our paperwork is in order, insurance, no citizen complaints.
Make a motion that petition for renewal be sent out octopus.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Turn this to you on harm.
Thank you very much.
You're totally welcome, sir.
That's what I don't do. I have paperwork here if anybody wants to see it.
No, what, all right.
Hold please.
Thank you. Hold isn't yet. Did I put it in?
No, he's not.
I apologize.
Slowly processing. I have an extra one if you'd like. You're on, it's incredible.
Okay, we're good. All right. I call a committee on the adjourn to order. Jeff Dillon, also president of Woburn City Council, and what, three councilor. We have two items on our agenda. The first, a reading and approval of the minutes from November 13th, 2024.
Some move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes. Second is pursuant to Rule 36 of the Rules and Orders of the City Council, receipt and placement on file of the following items that have been in committee for more than 24 months. Citizens' participation requests from Richard English, Local 971, to discuss firefighter retirement benefits. Citizens' participation requests for Richard English to discuss military buyback for city employees. Citizen participation requests from June McKenzie regarding notification and enforcement of the plastic bag ban. Order that the committee on the adjourns meet to discuss plastic bag ban enforcement with the Board of Health and City Solicitor. Communications from City Solicitor regarding appointing authority, human resource director. Order to place recreational marijuana question on 2023 municipal election ballot. Resolve to meet with the utility companies to discuss issue with utility poles. Citizens' participation requests by Donald and Dorothy Hamilton, 31 Columbus Road, to discuss Willow Street Brook. Citizens' participation requests by Jenna Francis to discuss Know Your Neighbor Woburn. Communications regarding the MBTA Communities Law, MGL Chapter 40A, Section 3A. Communications from Woburn Retirement Board regarding 5% local cola option. Communications from City Solicitor regarding Baron versus Colanda. And that's it.
Mr. Chairman, as this is a, as this is just a clerical issue this evening, to place these on file, I'll make a motion that pursuant to the rule 36, the order is passed.
On the motion?
Yes.
Just for clarification, I want to notify the council, I'm a board member of Know Your Neighbor Woburn, so I'll be abstaining from voting on any of this.
Thank you. On the motion, same as well. I'm a board member of Know Your Neighbor Woburn, so I'll be abstaining from.
Thank you.
Further clarification too, for the general public, these matters have all been addressed.
Thank you for the clarification. There is a motion and there's a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second. Motion and the second to adjourn, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We have adjourned. 7:21.